I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Please note for the record, all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. I want to move new business in front of the consent calendar. Is there any other changes or deletions? I'm hearing any. I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval of amended agenda.
You have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it brings us to oral communications number one. I have one slip here. Mayor Wayne Lee of Millbrae.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and STEAM members of the city council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm just here to invite you to our trade economic development meeting we're having on October 23rd. Millbrae's hosting and happy to hear that you're sending delegates. And I think as a region, if we work together, we can really exponentially increase our economic base in our local area. I think the peninsula, Sandwich Beach, Silicon Valley, and San Francisco, we're really ripe for that opportunity. And I'm also like to thank your council member and your staff from working together to try to bring a digital fiber network to allow high-speed internet along our corridor, which comes through Brisbane and goes down the BART tracks through Millbrae and so forth. And that opportunity would bring high-tech businesses to come to the area where that high-speed internet cable would run. So I think right now it would help our business attract more businesses and bring us up to San Francisco and Silicon Valley's level of infrastructure. And I think this is pretty cheap. I think it's an opportunity to franchise a business and bring extra revenues to our cities. So I thank you and your staff for helping out. I'm also here to let you know that on November 15th, we're having a healthcare signup day. And the county is partnering with Millbrae and it's open to the public. And we have 10,000 people who are eligible for insurance or uninsured in Millbrae. And I'm sure there's probably, that's about half of our population, which is surprising to me. So I'm pretty sure it's probably a pretty normal lot of cities in our peninsula. So that's open to the public on November 15th in the morning. And the last thing, I'm here to request and ask for, humbly request your support of my candidacy for the Samtrans Board of Director that's being vacated by Councilman Jerry Deal in Burlingame. Samtrans is right now, I think it's at a crossroad, even though they're increasing, the ridership's increased, there is quite a few challenges, I think. Being a longtime rider, coming from an immigrant family who depended on the bus service, and being an engineer, as well as a planning commissioner, and 15 years with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, I see what transit is like and what can be and what other transit districts could do. And I think our Samtrans has not really taken a modern step forward to be more efficient, be more relevant, and be the first choice for transit. I've traveled around the world. Buses and trains are the first choice of transit. And when I lived in San Francisco, it was the first choice of transit. And I don't think Samtrans is at that level. And I like to see it at that level. And I think we need to start looking at upgrading with technology and looking at things that make sense and providing cities like yourself, because I used to live in Pacifica and we had only one line out. And that was, and they were talking, they at one time talked about eliminating that one line. I know you have one line that comes through Brisbane, so you're pretty much in a similar situation. And I think that just that one line's not enough. I think that you have to have feeders to that line, too. You just can't say, oh, okay, we'll provide a line and people will show up. I mean, some people can't. And that's their only way of transportation. And that's their lifeline. And for my family, it was the lifeline for a long time. So I think that Samtrans needs ways to go and we need some new blood on there and I'm hoping to be that person. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry to go over at my time and thank you for your support. And I look forward to seeing you at other events. Thank you.
Good to see you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Cliff, I think you indicated you're going to show up at October 23rd?
Yes, I signed up for the event.
Yeah, and Lori, you're the other half of Economic Development Subcommittee.
Which event is this that you're talking about?
This is the Economic Development Summit, I think the city of Millbrae is putting on next week.
Oh, right, the one that he was talking about. I'll take a look at my calendar. Is that, what time is that during the day or at night?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
We two...
Six o'clock or something, but just our VP can call, just call our office and we'll just give you the directions. And we're hosting it, so it's a great dinner and you'll enjoy the evening.
Okay.
Yeah, we're also trying to coordinate a joint Economic Development Subcommittee meeting with Millbrae.
Oh, that'd be great.
In November.
That'd be...
Yes, you mentioned the conduit for the high-speed fiber optic cable.
Yes, it's exciting times.
That was the...
Yeah, I think it's a good franchise opportunity for every city that taps in. And I told the schools, too, they could tap in and that'd be very beneficial to the schools as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Wayne. Does anybody else wish to communicate with the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any takers. We're going to move on to new business. And the first item up is private party reimbursement for public roadway improvements. And Randy, staff report, please.
Mr. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. So the primary basis of the issue we're talking about tonight is the creation of public improvements by private parties when they are doing building of new homes or reconditioning their existing homes. The city's municipal code requires that when you build a new residence in the city or that when you improve an existing residence in an amount greater than 50% of its either current value or its square footage, that you're required to bring everything up to current standards. And that everything includes substandard road conditions if they exist outside of that residence between its property lines. So the story in particular here with 350 Kings goes back almost 15 years. It was when the then-new property owners came to the city and told us that they were going to be building a new single-family dwelling out there. One of the things that they were required to do was to do a fairly significant road widening in front of their property, which included a very significant retaining wall on the opposite side of the street. Because this particular improvement in the public right-of-way had public benefit and because it also had other benefiting properties, and when I say benefiting properties, what I mean is that there were properties directly across the street from this that were not developed yet but who would have been, had the same requirements imposed upon them that the Bynum's had imposed upon them when they built their house. So that's what makes them a benefiting property, because they get the benefit of this being built for them. The city entered into a reimbursement agreement with the Bynum's. And we said that if these other benefiting properties do develop within a certain timeframe, then we will agree that we will condition them to pay their fair share, their prorated amount of the improvements that you built when you were building your new home. This was the first reimbursement agreement that was done in the 14 years that I've been here. I'm not sure or aware if there were other reimbursement agreements prior to that. The term of this reimbursement agreement was 10 years. The reimbursement agreements that we've done since then have had terms of 15 or 20 years. The reimbursement agreement expired and then very, very shortly thereafter, the owner of the vacant land across the street put in a building permit and received a building permit application. So the reimbursement agreement was no longer in effect. So we were not required, in fact, we didn't have the legal authority to require that property to contribute any money to pay the Bynum's back for the work that they had done several years earlier. But in conversations with that property owner, he agreed that it would be, not out of a legal sense, but out of a sense of fair play, that he would be willing to contribute one-third of the cost that he otherwise would have been responsible for paying, even though, as I said, he has no legal duty to do that. The city in this resolution tonight is suggesting that we pay the other two-thirds of that cost to the Bynum's in recognition that there was a public benefit created when they widened the roadway to meet California fire code standards. And just as, it's not an aside, it's a somewhat important piece of the conversation, is that in addition to just flat-out requiring homeowners to widen the road and then enter into reimbursement agreements with them, we have had occasion in town where a new homeowner, new property owner will be doing a widening, will be doing an improvement. But in order to do the full improvement, because oftentimes we have to go out to 28 feet, the width that you have to do is based on the existing condition and use of the roadway in front of you. So if there's no parking on the side of the road, you only need to make it 20 feet wide for the fire code. But if there's parking on one side of it, you need to have an eight-foot parking bay so as to not take away existing parking, and you need to have the 20-foot widening. There have been, there's one occasion in particular that's the most significant one, where in order for the property owner to make the full widening, to create those additional parking spaces, they would have had to construct land that, albeit was in the public right-of-way, had been encroached upon by the neighbor across the street. And that's not inconsistent throughout town. I think, as you're well aware, people throughout town benefit from the public right-of-way and the city really has no reason to not allow that for many cases. If people have put plantings and such in the right-of-way, but that's lovely, that's wonderful. There are occasionally some structures that maybe probably shouldn't have been put there or maybe the city should have at least been involved in issuing permits, but nonetheless, they exist. So what we did in that particular case was we created an in-lu fund. And so what we did with that property owner, we said, okay, let's get together and agree what the cost of that road widening would have been. Let's look at what the cost of you building a retaining wall and adding that additional pavement. And we will take that money in cash and we will put it into a city in-lu improvement fund to be used on other streets. And the reason I went through that long story with you is that although it's not directly related to the Bynum's and their property at 350, that is the source of fund that we are proposing the city would use to reimburse the Bynum's if that's the pleasure of the council. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Council question.
I do not.
If we approve this tonight, are there other property owners who have done widenings that would come to the city expecting to be reimbursed for improvements that they've already done?
Ma'am, that's a theoretical question that I'm not sure I can really answer. I believe that the way the resolution has been drafted, it's been drafted so that this is not a presidential setting, that it's for this one case only. And the reason we have looked at it in particular in this case in doing this is that the term of this reimbursement agreement is so much shorter than all of the other reimbursement agreements that we've done, that it seems to be, out of a sense of fair play, the right thing to do.
I think you're probably getting to would this be setting a precedent, is that it...
Well, no, but I think that there's always a sense of fair play, if not precedence. And I'm sure there's other property owners and developments that have had to put in public right-of-way street improvements and that have public benefit for other parties. And so I'm just wondering if this sets the city for, as a sense, whether it's precedence or a sense of fair play, that it puts us where we could see other people applying for this kind of relief?
Ma'am, if it helps you, I can tell you that there's been a handful of these reimbursement agreements that have been done. I'm aware of that, that there's that number. It's five or six reimbursement agreements that have been done. But I, to the extent that they would make a similar request, I don't know. I know that all of them do have longer terms in there. And I do know that if the council were to approve this resolution tonight, the in-lu fund that we are taking this from would be nearly exhausted so there would not be funds available to pay anyone else who would make such a request.
In a way, this is kind of a one-off situation.
It is a one-off situation because of the short term, yes, sir. And it is a one-off opportunity because the funds that we would use would be extinguished.
If I could just add to Terry's statement, I share the same concern. And, you know, when I was reading through the documents, at first I thought, oh, well, the city must be obligated to pay something because we're offering to pay. And then when I got to the reimbursement agreement, I was somewhat surprised, you know, to actually see that there wasn't any obligation, but that we were, you know, as a matter of goodwill and because it was public benefit of having this improvement that we were going to offer or that it's proposed that we offer the $33,000. So, you know, I had asked staff some questions about this and that's why I had requested to defer it so that we could have you here, Clark, because I understand that you were involved in some initial discussions with the homeowners. So can you talk a little about how it came about that the city offered to contribute?
Yeah. You know, initially, I was contacted by the homeowner who wanted to explain the situation to me and explained it to me. And there was a part in there that really, really bothered me. And the part was, they initially went to one of our planning commissioners and said, you know, we would like to look at extending our agreement, reimbursement agreement. And our planning commissioner said, oh, the city wouldn't do that. And it really bothered me, A, that a planning commissioner said that.
Really?
And, you know, at that point, you know, I really had sympathy for the situation. And then they went to contact Randy and Randy had gone on vacation. And then subsequently, it expired by the time Randy got back. And that's when they contacted me. And then, you know, I talked with staff about the situation and then talked with the contractor. I think, Cliff, you talked with the property owner and staff did. And then the property owner came back and said, well, I think this is what would be fair. And then I said, well, what can the city do without this being a gift of public funds? I mean, to show that this is a public benefit. And that's where we're at right now, you know, it came up. You know, he did provide a public benefit.
Sure.
And I know for a fact, you know, that the homeowner actually borrowed 100,000-plus dollars from their parents in order to do this, because all their funds were tied up in building the home. And then they ended up, you know, basically losing all that, you know, because the 10-year agreement was the first one that the city has actually done. And so it was really, at the time, our attorney at the time just picked a number out of the air. So it was really something where it could have been avoided if, you know, the right people were addressed in the first place. And I'm a little bit miffed that, you know, we had a planning commissioner say something like that.
Okay, well, that doesn't help.
Without checking with a city council person or going to staff. And, you know, if one of us was approached, I know I would have went to staff and said, hey, is there something we can do here? And so that's really kind of what makes it a unique situation for me. And so I felt this is a real need to push us forward. And the applicant is, or the person is here tonight, the husband's here tonight, so Torrance Bynum, so.
Okay, and the amount that's proposed, is that the amount that, if, under the reimbursement agreement, that they would have been paid by the other contributing private homeowners? Is that correct? It's not like this homeowner wouldn't be paid more?
That's correct, ma'am. So this is the amount that would have been allocated to the property immediately across the street that is presently being developed and only that amount.
It was like, I think it was 50% that they were...
It's not quite that much, ma'am. I think there was another property that had a couple percent.
Okay.
You kind of have to trace the reimbursement. The reimbursement agreement is a little bit of a confusing mechanism sometimes because we enter into it with the homeowners before we know what the cost of the work is going to be, sometimes before we even see the plans, and then we do the work and then we go through. And then there's this somewhat challenging reconciliation project or process we go through at the end where we validate all of the construction costs that they've submitted. So it's, I have to go through and look at those and agree that, yes, that cost should be properly allocated to the cost of the improvement and so it should go against the reimbursement agreement. And then we do an addendum to the reimbursement agreement, so we indicate the dollar amount. And in this particular case, my recollection is that as we were going through the design process, we realized that the original design that we had based the ratio of benefiting properties on had to be changed because the wall and where it was going to be changed and it actually affected what percentage was on different properties.
Right.
So that's why there's a series of three, I believe, in this case, that you have to track from one to the other.
Okay. And Randy, can you tell us how much money is in this in-lu improvement fund? And what else can those funds be used for?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm looking to see if I can get you a record. So ma'am, I can't give you that answer right now, but my recollection is that if you were to expense this tonight, the $33,000, there would only be, there would be less than 10,000 left in it, maybe less than 5,000, not very much at all. And I don't know that there are specific restrictions on it, but when we sequestered that money to the side, we called it in-lu street widening and the intent was at the council's, I think when the council established that fund, was that we would use it for road widening projects at the city's discretion. But, so I don't know that that necessarily puts all sorts of legal boundaries on it other than what a previous council's decision was.
Okay. And Terry had mentioned, you know, or asked about whether there were other properties with some more reimbursement agreements. Do we know of any that have terms that are near expiring or, you know? My, I guess my suggestion is that in the future, I think it would be helpful to monitor when those are coming up, you know, near the end of their term and that I would suggest that the city proactively reach out to those homeowners who are parties to the agreement to ask, to see if, you know, assuming the city is willing to do so, if they'd like to extend that agreement so that we're not in this situation again.
Sure, ma'am.
But I think that your explanation has helped really, you know, justify in my mind why the city would make the payment, so.
Can I ask one other question of staff? And in this, it talks about a payment from the Bynum's to Louis Arata for engineering services. Are these services that were not paid for originally back when the work was done? Or how is that $7,940 play into this?
So that number played in there, ma'am, because when it was either the amendment or the addendum to the RA, it was one of the three documents that went along, it had not been paid. I don't know what the nature of the quarrel was with Mr. Arata, but because it was, had not been paid and we were aware of it, we put it in there. I'm told by Mr. Bynum that it's been paid, but before we would distribute any funds, we would have to have proof of that, because we did put it in a recorded document that we were going to ensure that the engineer was paid.
So is that recorded lien on the road widening or on the property?
No, ma'am, it's only recorded, it's only recorded in the reimbursement agreement. It's not recorded as a lien, because you can't create a lien against public property.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I have questions.
I'm done.
I'm done.
So who signed the original reimbursement agreement?
I believe, do you mean on our side, sir?
The total, who are all the people who signed onto this? Excuse me.
The Bynum's and the city signed onto it, sir.
That's it, huh?
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'm a little bit, the only thing that's a puzzle to me, I mean, I'm beginning to understand why we're doing this, but the puzzle to me is why we couldn't bring in other property owners into this in terms of their fair share of this improvement. And you said the statement before that it wasn't legally possible. But it strikes me as if you're going to do a reimbursement agreement that involves a number of properties, then all of those properties should have been a part of that agreement, just in terms of logic of it, anyway. And so if not, then wouldn't there be some kind of handle in which other subsequent property owners, when they come on board, that would be a condition of, you know, the permit, either the building permit or the occupancy permit? And I don't know, I'm just speculating here and I guess it's really a legal question. It's a question for the lawyer.
Yeah, that's, I see Michael grabbing his microphone and I'm not sure if he wants to take a full stab at that this evening or if he wants to look at the history of reimbursement agreements over the last 14 or 15 years and give you a fuller answer at a later date.
My experience with these typically have been that when the city figures out what property owners might benefit from the improvement, that those property owners at the time would be notified before the matter would come before the council, for example, and they would be told that the city's going to enter into this reimbursement agreement. We think the cost, the total cost of the improvement will be X. We think your share will be some part of that. Give them notice in terms of when the matter would be considered by the city council. So if they want to come and be heard on it, they could. And then, but typically after that happens, or whether they show up or not, the agreement is between just the city and the property owner, because that's the one to whom the reimbursement would be made. Sometimes I've seen these agreements get recorded, but again, the recording of it would simply be against a property that's doing the improvement, not against the properties that would be benefited, because you can't record a document unless those persons would actually sign the reimbursement agreement. So that is the way I have seen them done from time to time. But it is true that just because a property owner today might be notified, five years from now, that person might sell the property and then the new owner might not have any knowledge about it at all. So I don't think there's a fail-safe way to avoid the problem. I think by having longer terms, as Randy suggested, that the city now does, and perhaps extending some agreements as they come due, might avoid this situation in the future.
So, but there's no other way to recover from the people, the other property owners who are benefiting?
Well, not if the city has agreed with the property owner who has put in the improvement that it will collect the reimbursement only for a certain period of time. Once that agreement expires, you know, then that has sort of run its course. I suspect, I'm just thinking out loud, I guess you could create a new reimbursement agreement to, you know, to address this problem. But that's usually, I mean, I haven't seen that done, but I don't know that you couldn't do it that way.
Sir, and just to add to Michael, because I've got a little bit of history on it, so from what Mr. Hahn said, a couple of the things that happened here is, number one, we can't require the other property owners, the benefiting properties, to sign onto it, because they don't have any request or action before the city that gives us the authority to do that. So that's why it's simply a matter of informing them. And as a matter of practice, what we did when Hal Topal was here was that we would put the property descriptions and the APNs in there so that when the document was recorded, the document in the assessor's office was attached to each of those properties so that anyone doing a due diligence search would find it. And also, as a matter of course, when the recorded document came back to us, we put it into the address files here at City Hall. So again, anyone doing their due diligence search would find it, including new property owners.
Right. Right. But I'm still, okay, I'm getting it, but the unanswered question that was in my mind was, is there no handle at all that you have on someone who comes along and says, okay, I'm going to build a, a new house, and I'm going to take advantage of what this other person has paid for? There's no way to, to condition any kind of permit to get them to pay their fair share? There's no way to do that? I guess that's my question.
Well, in, in the absence of an agreement, I'd say the answer is, is no. But if, if there's an existing agreement in place that says that when property X develops, that we, the city has a, has a binding agreement to compel that, the new property developer to pay his or her fair share, that's where the hook becomes. But in the absence of that, there isn't, there isn't a...
There's no other handle?
I'm not aware of any other handle that the city could impose on the, the new property, or the property that's going to be developed.
Sir, I'm not aware of why 10 years was chosen the first time this was done. I don't, maybe I had that conversation, but I've had a couple of gray hairs since then, so I'm not sure what, what Hal's thought process was. But I, I think the only good lever we may have there is, is a conversation with Michael as to how long of a term he would be comfortable, as legal counsel recommending, the city put in those RAs. I mean, maybe 99 years is the appropriate term, and then that puts you out there, I don't know. It's, you know, we've, we started with 10, we went to 15, and then we've gone to 20, maybe it's a longer number. Maybe it's a matter, as Councilmember Lou suggested, where the city keeps track of these, and, you know, six months before they expire, we reach out to the parties and, you know, ask them if they're interested in requesting that, that we extend those terms, and if the council's amenable to that, we do. But I, I think that's where we're at, is someone's going to manage the timeframe.
It's still kind of curious to me that an agreement between one property owner and the city obligates other property owners. I mean, that, that's still a little bit fuzzy to me as to how we can do that.
What Michael deals with.
Well, it's, again, what, what happens as a practical matter is that, at least the reimbursement agreements that I have seen, says that the city will use its best efforts to collect the reimbursable amount. And typically then, when that project comes through, then as a condition of approval, whether it's through, through a PD process, or whether it's through a design review process, that condition gets placed there, that in order to pull your building permit, you have to pay this fair share. And if you then don't, then you don't get your building permit. So that becomes the hook.
So just to follow up on Ray's question, though, does that mean that in the absence of a reimbursement agreement, the city can't have that as part of a condition of approval?
I have not, I have not seen that condition imposed in the absence of an agreement. Now, sometimes, sometimes there are, you know, without getting into too much detail, sometimes there are specific plans, and part of that specific plan will set up essentially what is the reimbursement agreement, by which it says, all right, one developer of the specific plan is going to put in a million dollars' worth of improvements, and then as other properties develop, essentially they pay this specific plan's share, which essentially is the reimbursement amount to the fronting developer. So I've seen it done that way as well, but in the, the typical kind of single-family home, that's maybe extending a sewer line, or a utility line, or building a, a wall, it's generally done by a reimbursement agreement. That's, that's typically how it happens.
And, and if I may, I don't know if it helps the council, but I, but I think that the concept of the city, or a private party under direction from the city, or a developer under direction from the city, building public improvements, and then having later members that come along, later members of the public come along and pay for it, is not foreign at all, because we do that every day. That's what the capacity charges that we do for water and sewer are. The capacity charges that we bill for utilities really is a representation that others have come before and have built this system and have paid those initial costs to it, whether it's the city paying in outer general funds, or reimbursing utility bonds, or paying in outer rates, and then as the new owner, you come in and you've got the benefit of all that having been done, but you're paying your fair share into it. This is a little more awkward way of getting at it, because it's, you know, because unfortunately, as we widen our streets, as you know, we, we couldn't go out and widen all of King's Road right now if we wanted to. So we widen bits and pieces. We widen 25, 50-foot frontages as we go along, and we hope that with the long view, that we'll eventually get to where we want to be.
I guess just my, I mean, I understand this particular situation, and I have no problem doing that, because I think it is the fair thing to do. But, but it does seem to me that we have a, a system that has some holes in it, and that maybe we ought to rethink how we do this, so that we can be sure in the future, not just, you know, lengthening the reimbursement agreement, but having a process to make sure that when someone comes along and they're really benefiting from what somebody else has paid for, that we have a built-in mechanism to make sure it's flagged, number one, and two, that they're told, okay, this is your fair share of what has already been paid for essentially by another private property owner. So that's kind of for the future. But it's just an observation, it seems to me that if we had that kind of program in place, then we might not be where we are tonight.
Yes, sir. But we'll keep that in mind, if, if and when we bring another one of these to you. We, we are getting down on the inventory of undeveloped parcels, but we're obviously not down on the, the number of parcels that might want to be redeveloped to the same, to the 50% level that would trigger this. Certainly, we'll take that on board.
Okay. Any other questions?
I did have one question, if I may. The original agreement, would that go with the property? Or would it go with the, say, a homeowner entered into one of these agreements for a specific property, and then sold the home? Would the new homeowner be entitled to that reimbursement? Or the old property owner be entitled to those reimbursements? Do they travel with the property or the title?
Generally, the way I've seen them, that it goes with the person who actually made the payment. So the agreement is between the city and the payer, as it were, and therefore, if the city got the reimbursement, the city would pay that to the, to the person who originally paid it. Now, the agreement could be written in a different way, or the, the payer may have a, a separate agreement with the person to whom he or she sold the property, but generally the reimbursement agreement, under the, under the terms of the reimbursement agreement, the city would pay it to the person who made the improvements.
Even if they've moved?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? If you wish to make a motion for resolution number 2014-38.
So this is not a public hearing? We're not going to hear from the applicant?
Uh, it's not a public hearing, but if you want to hear from the applicant, I'm sure he'd be willing to, willing to speak, if you want. George, you want to come up and give us your name for the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mayor Conway and council members. I'm Torrance Bynum, I'm the property owner at 350 King's Road. And first of all, I do appreciate you even having this item on your agenda. There's a long history as to the reimbursement, the widening of the road, the monies that we paid, the benefits of widening the road. We have never benefited from it personally. My home, we have adequate parking. There is the parking that is on King Road, King's Road has benefited all the other property owners. We have been very compassionate with my family. When they visit, they don't use those parking, they usually park down here and we bring them up. And of course, my wife and I, we have our adequate parking. It is really stunning, when I look back over at the original agreement, the members that signed their agreement benefited from that parking. That person was a council member, and that person is my neighbor. That person utilized that part. We've had numerous calls to the police department here at Brisbane, because that person would have other members of Brisbane and other visitors of King's Road cars tagged and towed. So I say that to say that we have not benefited. I was misinformed. I, I came to Randy's office, office, excuse me, he was on vacation. I was told that they would not extend the agreement. The contractor, it was, i.e. nepotism, per se, he waited two days after their agreement when Mr. Bro was on vacation, and then he started breaking ground on the other side of King's Road. So there's a lot of history, but I, I'm hopeful that the council will do what is right and make a decision in good faith. As to Lou Arata, Mr. Arata was paid over $40,000. Mr. Arata did not only do the work opposite of my home at 350 King's Road, he did work at 350 King's Road also. Mr. Arata is a survey engineer, so we hired him via our contractor. Where the $7,000 came is, came in is when Mr. Arata asks for additional monies, and we paid that through our contract. Otherwise, my home would have had a lien, and there are no liens on the home. So everybody's been paid, and everybody's benefited but the Bynums, because we have not used the part, the parking. All the neighbors used the parking, just until the contractor broke ground. Their tenants were, was using the parking, their illegal in-laws was using the parking, but the Bynums never used the parking. So I, again, hope that you will take into consideration what is, what is right, and in good faith, and reimburse my family and myself what is owed to us. And I do appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Torrance. I have one further question. I'm still puzzled by this Arata requirement. Why do we need to have that in there? What's the point? If it's already...
It's in one of the agreements. It, it's in one of the agreements.
Because there's a legal requirement?
It was not paid at the time. It was not paid at the time, so it's in the agreement. It's in, we, we've talked about the reimbursement agreement, and we have the...
All you really need is some kind of official documentation, in fact, that has been paid.
Most likely a letter from Lou Arata saying that he's been fully paid.
That's been in, it's in the prior agreements?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Want to come up, Torrance?
Seven years ago, Mr. Arata was taken to a living assistance. And I, it is my understanding, and I will check with my contractor, J.K. Construction, I don't think Mr. Arata is even living any longer.
Mr. Marrigus, you want me to answer that? Torrance looking at me, so notwithstanding that, somehow the Bynums are going to have to prove that this money was paid to them at some point.
Because it's in...
We'll need some sort of proof, absolutely, absolutely. The city took that on as a duty, that we would make sure that was paid, so someone's going to have to come up with the proof that it was paid.
Okay, so I guess we're kind of stuck with what you're saying. Is that something you're able to do?
Sure. I, I think his daughter took over the business. Mr. Arata was not paperless. He was not paperless, so his office is in Mill, is in Millbrae. I will go down, and then I'll also contact my contractor, who was allocating the funds for the project.
Okay, okay, very good, sure. Thank you. Any further council questions?
So just for the staff, I want to make sure that by going into this agreement, we're not opening the door for other people to come in who've, who've paid money for, for street improvements as requirements for buildings, for getting a building permit to come back in and ask for reimbursement.
I think you're asking for legal opinion on that, ma'am.
Yes.
By understanding, that's how I was prepared, but I'll, I'll leave that over to council.
Legal opinion.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that we could tell you unequivocally that no one in the future is ever going to come in and ask to be reimbursed. I think there are very unique circumstances here that have been described. I think anybody that would come in, we would evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. You know, I, I don't see this as precedent, but on the other hand, there's no way to tell you unequivocally that someone else might not ask for reimbursement under very similar circumstances. From what Randy says, it doesn't sound like there's many agreements out there. I think the likelihood is small, but there's always a light, there's always a chance.
But even without an agreement, this kind of thing could come forward if someone were to say that...
I think without, if someone had put in improvements and, and city had not entered into a reimbursement agreement at the time, for that person now to come in and say, I'd like a reimbursement agreement, so that when the properties next door to mine do develop, I'd like to be reimbursed, I think the city would have to evaluate that, and they would come with a recommendation to the council whether or not that ought to be entered into. I mean, that's, that would way, the process would work that way.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm prepared to move approval of resolution 2014-38. Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Okay. Approved. Good, okay, next item on the agenda is skate park. And sorry you guys had to wait for that. So it's consider approving the recommendation by the council facility subcommittee to design a new skate park to be constructed at the existing skate park location. Staff report.
Mayor, member of the council, members of the council, as you know, council entered into a contract with Spawn Ranch back in June of this year, and we held, staff held a kickoff meeting with Spawn Ranch, and shortly thereafter, a community workshop. At the time, the kickoff meeting was an information gathering session for Spawn Ranch, and they proposed that they evaluate a site that's considered for a skate park on a number of criteria, and they communicated with staff and asked what possible other sites might be available. They considered the existing skate park a reasonable site, but a little bit sterile. We discussed three possible sites. That was the existing skate park site, the existing now-closed teen center site, and the east end of the community park. And the consultant looked at, at the time, both the area with the seat wall and the area with the picnic tables, both of them being about a similar square footage. They, at the community workshop, showed photos and had kind of a little discourse about the three sites, and got feedback from the attendees. And then, following that, they prepared a site analysis of three sites. Those first three sites, when they did that analysis, they looked at the easternmost end of the community park as the third site, the area that has the seat wall, because it would have less impact to users of the community park. They found the three sites overall scored pretty comparably. They, some were better for, slightly better for some reason, some were slightly better for others. There was the question of residences nearby, the two sites other than the existing site, but there was also, the teen center was a little bit larger, they were all accessible to the community, they were all visible. They liked the east end of the community park, because it had, it merged with other uses. The rest of the family could be at the community park, the bathroom was a bit closer, it had a nice natural environment to blend into. After they did that site analysis, it was discovered that the San Francisco Public Utility Commission's easement for Crystal Springs Transmission Line Number One traversed that site, and the easement was 30 feet wide and bisected, and kind of had a significant impact on that site, because we are reluctant to, and easement is discouraging any structures built over that water line. So we shared that information with the skate park designer, and we moved the analysis slightly west to the site, east of the community park bathrooms, and where the picnic, the non-reserved picnic tables are. And they did an analysis on that site, and they also found it comparably, it's scoring comparably to the other sites. So the facility subcommittee... So the facility subcommittee, council facility subcommittee met and reviewed all of that analysis, and decided to recommend the existing skate park site for two primary reasons, that the feedback from the stakeholders had been that they liked the existing site, and that they wanted to not incur impact on neighbors, and not incur impact on, on users of the community park. So at this point, staff has brought this forward, and is asking for council's recommendation to stay at the existing site and continue forward on the conceptual design process.
Council questions? You know there's some. Lori?
Sure. So I had asked staff a few questions, and maybe I'd like to hear from the facilities subcommittee a little bit more, because I know you, you discussed that. I know there's been some talk about a library as well, and I'm wondering what, whether that, about a library relocating to the current existing skate park site. So has that been considered in your recommendation? I guess that'll be my first question.
Let me, let me try this from the first, Ray. Initially, in our initial conversation, and this took place a month and a half ago, I'd, I would say, something before I went to the other place.
Farther than that.
And, and we did talk about it, and Ray, Ray and I were kind of on opposite ends, you know, we were, we were completely polar opposites on that. And we said we'd have another meeting, which was the one, the subsequent one that we just had last week.
And were you at that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it took off.
If you were available.
No, we had, we, we had to get together on it, because we didn't have a recommendation for the council, the subcommittee didn't, so. While I was laid up, you know, I had, of course, got to do a lot of thinking about a lot of things, and one of the things that I never took into consideration was, what are the skaters' expectations? What do they want? And so, before our meeting, you know, I asked, what is it they want? And I know Michael Barnes has kind of been representing the skaters, and, and he was pretty eloquent about, you know, that they wanna be where they're at. They wanna be located where they're at, and it'd be less of an impact on neighbors and stuff, and kinda, same ideas that I think the consultant came back with, you know, that it won't impact the neighborhood, and that could turn into a political football. And, and I agreed with that. I agreed that, you know, I want to, for the people who are gonna use it, you know, their say, and not truncate them, you know, and say, "Well, thanks for sharing, but we're going this way," you know, and, and so, you know, talking about the library, yeah, we, we, you know, looked at that, you know, beginning, and, and Ray and I, like I said, were at odds, but, you know, I felt, you know, at the time, you know, we need to have a real clear direction, and, and I was swayed by the argument of going, going back to the original site, mainly it's, you know, just being respectful to the users that currently use it. And so that's really where I was, where I'm at, and I, I think it could cause some other problems if we decided to locate at the end of the park, you know, so. So initially, it was part of the conversation, the library was, I think, your question, but the-
Right.
Kinda give you the full circle of where we're at, and anything to add to that, Ray? I think so.
Okay.
Said it all.
And, and when the recommendation is for it to be at the existing location, I know, actually happened at, when I was in L.A. at the Lego Cities Conference, I, I had a chance to talk with the representative from Spawn Ranch, and he had mentioned that, you know, that site was sort of constrained in its shape, because it's a square, and he thought that it would be better if it was longer. So is the recommendation to include, you know, expanding it into the basketball area? And have you thought at all about the idea of taking the basketball courts and relocating them somewhere else? And one proposal I've thought of is, since the basketball courts are used primarily, it appears by people who are not from Brisbane, who drive here, that perhaps if we could find a space at the ridge, and there is actually that Brookfield Home staging area, it's city-owned property, it's right at the corner of Mission Blue and Monarch, I think, next to the baseball diamond, that, that might be a potential site for the basketball courts, and then we could expand the skate park at its existing site to be a better usable space. Just wanted to put that out there, and I don't know if it's something you've discussed.
Yeah. Ray, maybe you wanna chime in, but I, I know we've, we've talked about using the current footprint, and then there was a suggestion on making, I don't know what you call it, a rail park at the end of where the basketball park is, where just to streamline a straight line of, for skaters that, you know, don't wanna get involved in the, the, um, one part of the park that, you know, they like to do railing, I guess you could, I'm, I'm not sure of the term, is that a correct term, asking the skaters where they have a straight line of hopping up on some things that would be additional? And Karen, maybe you can answer that?
They'd talk, well, we'd talked about a skate spot at the, that would be the westernmost end, instead of shifting the basketball courts, having a small area that had a few features, right, that are in a half, I bore ramp type.
They're not, not about going in and intruding into the basketball court, but leaving it in situ.
Okay. And I think that Spawn Ranch in their analysis talked about, one, one of the criteria was, you know, the potential, or the potential risk of, of skaters, you know, going, you know, or their skateboards flying out of the skate area and going into traffic, and, you know, they talked about putting up barriers as a way to prevent that. Do we know if, you know, currently, if that's an issue? Because I thought anecdotally that I had heard of a skater, you know, almost, a skateboard almost flying into the street, and I wanna make sure that if it's in its existing location, that it's safe to, to traffic.
You're, you're correct that, I, I think we saw a skater's skateboard go out on Old County Road when we were reviewing the sites with the skate park consultant, interestingly. But all of the, all of the sites front the street where that could happen, and they've talked about a low barrier that still makes the site visible to police wanting to patrol it.
A low barrier, okay. Okay, and I know the skaters do have to get, get home soon, so I won't ask too many more questions, but one question I had was, so with respect to the, the potential site that was considered on the east end of the community park, just adjacent to the bathrooms, would that site be impacted by the easement, as well as the one to the west?
That site is not impacted by the easement, no.
Okay, so what would be the impediments there, aside from, I guess, removing the picnic tables?
Yes, removing the picnic tables, and you still have the neighbors on San Francisco that are gonna be across the street from a skate park if we put it there.
Okay. All right, that's all I have now.
Okay. Can we, can we divert a little bit then, and, and get testimony? I know these kids gotta get, get home and get to bed, so maybe we can just take some testimony from your folks. All you do is just raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you, and give me your first and last name for the record, so go ahead.
All right, all right. My name's Ethan Velho, or E.J. Velho, either one. I'm a Brisbane resident, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I agree with where the skate park is and where we could put it, because behind, behind this park that we have, we usually like to chill there, a lot of people do, so usually it's not the best place to put it. And the teen center, I just think, I don't know, maybe put the basketball, basketball courts over there, maybe, but also, I think where the skate park is, you know, people don't really bother us, you know, somewhere we can just relax, or just chill with our friends, or just do whatever. So no one's really bothering us, and yeah, so thank you guys for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you. Who else? Come, come on up, Malcolm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Malcolm Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident, and I agree, I agree with Mr. Mayor and the subcommittee, because I think where the skate park is, there's not, you know, a lot of complaints about the skate park where it is, no one really gets mad, and a couple of the problems about the teen center spot is that if we put a skate park there, there, there's probably gonna be a lot of complaints about the noise, and so, I'm gonna use example of the new skate park in San Francisco. It's under like a freeway, it's called DeBose, and when they first opened it, tons of skaters went there, and then immediately the ma, the neighbors, they started complaining about the noise. So now what's happening is, there's a time limit to when the, for when the skaters can go into the park and actually, you know, skate, and so I think if we put the teen center, or sorry, put the skate park at the teen center, I'm afraid that that would, that would happen, and since a lot of people get up early, or, you know, later to go skate, it might, you know, conflict with that. And then also, one of the problems with the park, with the suggestion of putting it where the park is, I mean, it, it would make for a great spot, but I think it would, you know, cost a little bit extra money to, like, deconstruct the benches and sort of navigate through that area, and it would also cause a lot of noise for like children who are playing in the play structures, and a lot of them, you know, are toddlers, so they might wander over the skate park and get hurt. So that's another reason why, you know, we should probably just put it where it is, because I think it's a great spot, no one's going to complain about it, and we're all comfortable in that area. And I don't think the basketball courts should be moved, I mean, it just feels, you know, sort of comfortable. I don't, me personally, I don't know about the other skaters, but I feel like, you know, the balls don't really come into the skate park that often, and so I don't think anything should really happen with the library, because I don't wanna skate over there, that's just kind of weird for me, but, yeah. And, yeah, that's all, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, goo, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Dominic Gornizo. I am a Brisbane resident. I agree with the recommendation to keep the skate park where it is, because it's more away from the neighborhood, so the neighborhood cannot be, like, it's more away, and I recommend that it just stay where it is, because neighbors could complain, and, from the disturbance of the noise that, because some skaters are really loud. They yell, you know, it's noise with the, the ramps and the skateboards, and it makes noise, it makes tons of noise, and, because it's over there, it's more away from people who are trying, you know, children are trying to, you know, get to sleep, adults gotta go to work in the morning. It is really, it's really, you know, they're gonna stay up all night near the neighborhood. And I like, it's more, better where it is, because it's more, I feel like it attracts people when they come into Brisbane, you know, visitors, you know, family. They, they look at the skate park when they pass by, and so it brings more attraction to parents, children, to come, you know, play the skate park, there'd be toddlers, you know, on their scooters and stuff. So I really recommend it stays where it is, and I don't want to move it. All I ask is that it could make a few adjustments, like make it better, you know, yeah. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dominic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Aaron Raspberry, and I'm a Brisbane resident. I agree with the subcommittee's recommendation to keep the skate park where it is, because if we put the skate park at the teen center or park, it could cause a disturbance to the neighbors, and we don't want to have the neighbors, like, set a time limit on the skate park, and, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sorry. Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Berman Giuliano Gornizo, known a lot as Yano. I'm a Brisbane resident. I agree with the subcommittee's, sorry, recommendation to keep the skate park where it is, because I feel it's a place where most people come to hang out, meet, and even be alone. I feel like we should keep the skate park in the same place, because many skaters from many places come here to skate, and if we move it, they might not know where it is, and these guys skate, skate till like nine to ten, and if we move the skate park, there's most likely going to be a time limit, if you will, which will, which is understandable for noise reduction. We can avoid this by just keeping the skate park in the same place. The same place. I also want to add that there is a ditch sort of behind the skate park, where there's like trees and like brush, and there's many skaters who live really close to, oh, sorry, behind the basketball courts, and there's many skaters who live really close to the current skate park location, so I feel like that's an easy place for them to just, you know, slide by and go. I disagree moving the skate park to the back of the park, because many of the elderly residents of Brisbane like to sit and relax, have a nice meal even. It's just something I would like you to consider. The teen center isn't a good spot either, because there is a trailer park literally right next to it, so it feel, I feel we really need to consider this idea. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff. My name is Jade Escobedo, and I am a Brisbane resident. I agree with the subcommittee's recommendation to keep the skate park where it is, because if we moved it to the back of the park, it's kind of inconvenient in a way, because it's a place where a lot of people like to go when they're either down, or just wanna be away from people, and like, elderly go back there a lot. When I'm back there, usually there's this old man, and I feel like it might be his son, and he's always in his wheelchair, and they just sit there, and they enjoy the view of people driving by, and I feel if we move it there, it's disturbing where they go to be out and have their peace and quiet, and plus, a lot of skaters are older and use swear words, so behind the park, it's by little kids. It's kinda bad. I just feel like that's a bad mix. It's pretty true. It's people's quiet place, and it's pretty much all I have to say, and thanks for this opportunity to speak.
Right. Thank you. Amen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Gina Burton, and I am a Brisbane resident. I agree with the subcommittee's recommendation to keep the skate park where it is, because I like where the skate park is now separated from the park. It gives us another place to go to, to when we're tired of skateboarding. Behind the park would be very inconvenient, like Jade said. A lot of skaters also use bad words, like when they fall, or they're hurt, and then some kids don't like see blood if someone falls, or anything, that sometimes be a problem. And then, yeah, the skate park's a very fun play, very fun place to go when we're, when we have a bunch of friends, and then the day in the parks as well, I mean, the, the concerts in the park, we all like to hang out at the skate park and have a good time, because sometimes there's not enough room for us to hang out, and thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Amen. It's okay, you can come up and say what you want. You don't, you don't, you don't have to come up, don't let, let nobody force you. I see, you don't have to come up, but, okay, that's all right. You guys did a great job, you're very concise and to the point of what you, you wanted to, any of the adults here wish to speak on this? Okay, let's bring it back to council. Oh. Okay, Renee?
I'm Renee Marmian.
I'm Renee Marmian, a Brisbane resident and you know, I've always been for the skate park. And the location there is perfect, we all can see the kids, they're very vis- visible. Can always find a kid when you need to find them. Uh, on your way home from school and on school and the weekends and it's their place. We just need to enhance it better for them, so I hope you pick that location and. Continue on, thank you.
Thank you Renee, okay, let's bring it back to uh council questions, further questions.
Yeah, yeah, I do, so um, yeah, I just first I I wanna just thank you guys before you take off um for speaking tonight. I didn't know so many kids cared about uh, you know, the quality of life of of their neighbors and so that was really nice to hear from all of you. You know, looking at these other sites, uh, the reason why these other sites were chosen, it was for you guys. You know, to look at other locations, to enhance the skating opportunities for you. And um. But you know, tonight you you spoke and said that you liked the other location and you gave really good reasons. And so um, you know, that that that's helping me in my decision making, so I just wanna thank you for that. Um, so uh my question to the to the subcommittee, so when we had the um, the workshop. Uh, the one that Spawn Ranch uh held, you know, um. I I didn't see any any info from the from the, any feedback from from the the skaters, from the community. And then um, I know that we're we're gonna do a online thing through Facebook and so where where's that data? To to support your um decision.
I'd have to have staff because I didn't show up to it, I didn't go there.
I haven't seen anything.
Uh Karen?
That's a great question and it was almost three months ago that we had the community workshop, but as I recall. The skaters, their interest was to keep it where in the existing location.
You speak up a little more, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, as I recall from the community workshop that was almost three months ago now, the preponderance of. Um, interest was to keep the skate park where it was at that meeting.
Okay, and then um, you know, looking at the Spawn Ranch um info. So, looking at the existing skate park. So, under design canvas. Talks about design potential and functionality could be improved at the basketball court. Shoot uh could be shifted slightly, so um, you know, we're. So we had, so based upon feedback from the skaters. Um, based upon the feedback that that you guys got from the from the workshop. Seems like that in in the recommendation from from the two of you is to keep it at the site. Though, when you look at the site, there's. You know, there's vegetation along the edges, there's the the tree that is um, that was cut down. On the park lane side of the basketball court, so there's kinda like this dead space. Um, so when you were looking at that, were you thinking of perhaps, you know, expanding the the skate park a bit? To accommodate the. You know, what what might be considered a dead space.
I think it was, yeah, I think that was uh, part of the, part of the thing is we're looking at some. Area between the basketball courts and uh skate park and also um. Out a little bit to towards the trees, is that?
So exactly, and that's the very next step in the request for proposals. When we selected Spawn Ranch, we talked about four different potential sizes on the existing site, so. They're going to give us the advantages and disadvantages and costs to utilize the space that's there and. Either shift the basketball court or over to to the west as far as you can up against the sidewalk. On Park Place or expand out to the sidewalks on Old County and Park Lane, they're gonna. That's the very next step is to look at those options and see if that space can be utilized effectively for whatever additional cost there is.
Okay, um. It's probably about six months ago I I went out to the skate park um with uh David Primmer. And so, just trying to get some, you know, some information from him, I'm not a skater, I know that he is. Um, you know, and and we talked about, you know, having some cap- uh, some shared. Space, you know, compatibility with the basketball court, so we have the half pipe and and but there's no. There's no seating for for bas- for the basketball players. So um, is that something that that you guys might consider in in as you're designing it? Having this compatibility where, you know, something that benefits the skaters is also benefiting the basketball. Um, uh courts as well.
I'm gonna have to defer to staff on that, 'cause uh, you know, it's. I don't know what it's gonna be, and I don't think you do either, we just gotta choose the site right now and then. Kinda see what the designer comes up with, eh?
Right, I mean, I think it can be, that that definitely can be brought to the designer and I would have to say that. I have not spoken to them about that, but they've apparently had contact with a lot of the community otherwise, so they may. They may already have that in their thoughts, but that's again, part of what we'll go forward with because the next step in the process. For the council is, the next step in the process is that the consultant develops. These conceptual design options and then the joint Park and Rec Teen Subcommittee and. Council Facility Subcommittee is gonna look at those options and they're gonna come forward with a recommendation to council. On a concept design before we do anything else.
Yes, so you know, since that is the next step, you know, I just, we were at this meeting. I'm not on that subcommittee, so I wanna just, you know, kinda throw in some two cents that that I picked up from someone from the community, which I think is is. Is a good idea. And that, you know, I'm hoping that that's considered when you're you're evaluating the different designs.
Sure, it all all comes down to cost too, budget.
Well, I, you know, I mean, you're absolutely right and in in uh, I hope that when you bring forth the. The, you know, the different options, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I mean, I. I mean, I'm glad that, you know, that you're giving your recommendation, of course, but that there's also, you know, we're looking at the other options too, we're just not. We just don't have the existing site and that's all that we're looking at, so when um. I mean, the next time you come before the council, you know, I'd like to see the different designs, of course, the one that you recommend. But then it's also good to understand what those those costs are for each design.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think it's interesting that the skaters and the uh kids that are interested in this project. All wanna keep it at the current location, part of its noise, part of its time restrictions. And that they don't wanna be an impact on the community, um, I think we. Right at this point, I think that the site that it's at is probably the least impact to other uses. But we do have to keep in mind that there's proposed housing to go um zoning changes to make. That area housing and that any um. Intensified use, I think that there will have to be hours that it's available to be used. It can't be a twenty-four hour party hotspot and that it would would be an impact. If it becomes that and that, you know, we're gonna have to have rules and sound deadening and. Other things that go into design if and when we build this park. We haven't come to an agreement that we're gonna build it and I am of the thought that, from what I see. That it's really important to, you know, pick a spot so that we can find out what it's gonna cost. But we haven't seen any costs, we don't have any budget except for the concept of doing it and to to design it. And I think that the the. Uh, basketball court next to it gets a lot of use and whether they're residents or non-residents. I I'm not sure that's important if they're residents or non-residents, 'cause I think it's a bonus. And a and an active play spot for for people and and a wider group of age groups also. Um, but I I would. Like to see what the impacts later come from staff on the proposed housing element changes to impact. The possibility of placing it here, but from what we have, I would think that this makes the most logical sense. Um, at this point in our. Planning process to to keep it at that spot. You guys have done a great job on on discussing those options.
Thank you. Any other question?
So, are there any current hours of operation, is it closed at night? You know, what came out from the testimony we heard was that it ha- that the use would be a lot, would it would be at night, so. What is, what are the current rule?
There are no current, there are no hours for that nor for the basketball court.
Okay. Yeah, I I I wanna thank also the skaters for coming out and and talking, I think your your recommendation was was clear. Um, I think, do we have a question or is that just?
I thought you were saying hi to you.
You want, you wanna ask, you gotta come up here, young man.
Um, it doesn't have to be a twenty-four hour hotspot, I just think that there are many uh older. People who are dedicated to this, to the sport of skating and uh, you know, they like to be there late, like, you know, 'cause they're adults and. They like to be there, you know, later and uh, I just feel like, you know, not many of them are kids, but. Uh, some of them are adults and they are really dedicated to that sport, I know a couple of them that uh do stay there quite late and uh. I mean, I I just didn't think that there was uh much wrong, I mean, with the skate park. But uh, I think it's in a perfect area, 'cause it's not many houses and uh. I just wanna say thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, she was just asking the question if if we had a time limit on it, which we don't.
Currently, um, but I think, you know, Terry does raise a good point about the housing element, I hadn't thought of that, that, you know. Currently, there isn't any housing there, which is, which is good for, you know, noise issues. Um, but at the same time, even if we on the housing element, you know, put in place some incentives for housing to be built, it. May not happen and it may not happen anytime soon.
Hasn't been zoned yet.
Nope, hasn't been zoned and it certainly.
So we think, you know, we we do have to work with the current context. Um, and I I would like to see, you know, potential designs that include the the full. Site, not not just where it currently is, but you know. Taking over or, you know, expanding into the basketball courts, because, you know, I understand the basketball courts are. Used quite quite a lot, as Terry mentioned, and I I do value that even though if they're not Brisbane residents, but my point was. That if they're not Brisbane residents, they're probably driving, so if they're driving to Brisbane. You know, it doesn't have to be at the current site, it could be somewhere else in Brisbane and of course, we need to weigh the costs of building a whole new basketball court. Um, and that's not something that's before us tonight, but um. But I think that, you know, if we're going to build a new skate park, we wanna build it right and we met, we wanna make it. Um, an attraction, you know, that's not just for the skaters, but really, you know, um, a public space. Sort of what we talked about, um, what the designer talked about, um, you know, at one of the prior meetings that, you know. We we won't, we don't wanna just replace it with some new structure, but we wanna make it a really good public space and, you know. Perhaps expanding it might do that. Um, so I wanted to ask staff, where are we in that? Process um that was laid out to us, you know, if we're proving for this location. Does that mean a design is going to be made for this location or is it gonna, are there gonna be multiple designs? Um, for different iterations of this location?
Alright, good question, um, we are definitely adding a step in the process selecting this site. It, when we originally set up, approved the skate port park process, we didn't consider alternate sites. But we are now, the design firm will work with the public and create multiple designs and then, as I said, the joint. Subcommittee that's the Park and Rec Teen Services and the Council Facility Subcommittee will then. Look at those and recommend one to council, so if you um take the action tonight, we will only look at options. At that site for the skate park.
Okay, but would, if if we looked at, say, you know, the existing site and then part of it being expanded for a skate spot and then also. Um, a third one, I I guess would be expanding it to include the basketball area, would there be three separate designs? And is that within our approved budget?
Yes, yes, at this point, the contract is to look at four, is to look at four alternates, so if the council directs us to. Consider changes to the basketball court, any reduction of its size or potentially moving it. That could be accommodated, I believe.
Okay, this um, one thing Lori, uh, I know for a fact that the basketball court is used by a lot of Brisbane residents. You're probably referring at nighttime.
Okay, right.
So I just wanna make that clarification, 'cause uh, I know a lot of folks that use it and certainly uh. Been repaired by Brisbane residents, so.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
Residents, not 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 a.
Your brother.
Staff, right, yes. Yeah, and they just had to change out a backboard or two, I think, because uh, some people like to monkey around on it.
What's the history, were those basketball courts there before the skate park, what's the history?
Uh, yeah, I think um, I don't know. I'm gonna think about, I know Joel Diaz is here and he's the one that uh initiated building the skate park originally and uh. Actually put forth a lot of his personal, personal labor, if not all of it and and money to do it and I think it might have been. Uh, if you wanna come up and give a little history of the world, part one. Give us your first and last.
The skate park was there first, as I recall.
Give your first and last name for the record.
Sorry, Joel Diaz and uh live here in Brisbane, so the history, as I recall, was uh Dan Waters, a parent, I think he was on Park and Rec. Uh, constructed a plywood box, like a like a pyramid, I guess you call it. And um, and then uh Dale Conway and um and Randy Romrell. Got together and put in the basketball courts and then the kids kinda got like envious of that and were like, hey, where's our, where's our skate park? And the blue ramps um were in place at that point, but there, the metal ramps don't work very well and. So, so, you know, my dad had built me a a half pipe when I was a kid and it made a huge impact on the neighborhood and all the kids came there and we were just always competing and. So I could just see, like, that would be a really cool thing for for the kids in town and so, uh, I think that answers the question, I hope.
So the skate park was built.
First.
The skate park was built before the basketball courts.
Yeah, yeah.
And when was that?
Two thousand and six. And the the, that's when, when I got involved in the basketball courts were two thousand and six.
Okay.
And then the plywood skate park was much earlier, I think.
And what was there beforehand?
Parking lot.
Yeah, it was a parking lot.
It was dirt lot, it was a dirt lot.
Yeah, it was actually the post office.
Right.
Originally before uh the le- the road was opened up, so it used to be a post office there. And uh, the city wanted to punch a road through because we made city hall here. And so, uh, found out the post office didn't own the building, 'cause they didn't wanna move, it was owned by, I think, the State Teachers Association. Or somebody like that and then uh, uh, so the city had talked to them and then came up with a plan to. Move the post office to where it currently is and the city would purchase that property and then put a road through. And so that was done and that left that parcel there vacant and so it was actually uh. Parking lot, I believe, right, it had parking spaces that just sat there for nothing.
The idea, if I can just interject right there, the idea back then was that the site to the west was a potential. Park and Recreation Offices.
Right.
And the part on the east was gonna be the parking lot for that facility, so that parking lot was paved at the time.
Right.
And where the basketball car- courts are, it was left dirt.
Could I just say one last thing, I did wanna say that I just think that you guys, all of you council members are doing an awesome job. And you you really are, in my mind, building community here and really excited about getting to the building part and seeing. And really excited about getting to the building part and seeing, seeing what happens next. And I'm really confident we can raise the money to do this and very, very quickly. So thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Okay. So where are we? Councils, any more questions?
Yeah, if if there isn't, I mean, I'm ready to just say, hey, keep uh, moving forward and I I approve the recommendations that um, you guys have made and and um, looking forward to the new designs.
Okay, um, do we need it? We don't need a motion for that, do we? Or would you like?
No, we need a motion.
You do?
We do need a motion. Alright, so then uh.
We wanna be clear what happens tonight.
Exactly, what are we, we're not approving anything other than a recommendation.
So my motion is to um, approve the recommendation by the council facility subcommittee to design a new skate park to be constructed at the existing skate park location. With multiple uh, designs.
We have a second?
But do, do we want it to be, to be constructed? I mean, aren't we still just looking at designs? We have not decided we are building this.
Right, that's why it's approved recommendation to design.
To design the new skate park
Right.
at the existing skate park location and not to be constructed.
Okay.
I mean, I I think that's semantics, but I think it's important to
For potential construction.
At a different meeting, at a different meeting, just to say, we were
You're right.
berated.
It's a valid point.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, Terry.
Okay, so I'll strike that. I'll take out, be constructed, but design the new skate park at the existing skate park location.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, we have motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye.
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 Okay.
Alright, good job.
Before we move on to public hearing, uh, Michael wanted to make a comment.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. I came before you a month ago with a check for a thousand dollars from the proceeds of T-shirt sales. The thousand dollars was to go towards construction of a skate park once the process got back on track. We're back on track tonight, but unfortunately, in the intervening month, uh, we've had a lot more T-shirt sales. So now the check is not a thousand dollars, but it's three thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
Made out to Ray, no. No, it's made out to City of Brisbane. And Wendy, you wanna take this?
Thank you, Michael. You've done a great job with those sales.
Good job. Alright.
Alright, good job, guys.
Okay. Now the really juicy stuff and public hearing. Now the public left. Wanna take a break?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take a break. Uh, let's take five.